I'd like to call this school board work session regular meeting Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, 7:00 PM to order. Ms. Robel, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Bergnick. Mrs. Brancato.
Here.
Mrs. Crossen.
Here.
Mr. Dixon. Mrs. Islandberg.
Here.
Mr. Goddixon.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Panofsky.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
I'm here. Sorry.
Mr. Dixon. All right, great. Thank you. Seven in the room, two remote.
Thank you. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, for announcements, I just wanted to share that I had several community members reach out to me with concerns about the rebate program. I just wanted to clarify for all, we are not moving forward with any rebate program due to budget constraints and possible legal issues. However, the state rebate program is still available. Did anyone have any questions regarding the rebate program? Again, we are not moving forward with the rebate program. Yes. Also, we had an executive session from 5:45 until 6:45 regarding personnel matters. Then we have student presentations. William Tann High School, Logan Merritts.
Where should I go stand?
Right there, it's fine, yes.
Can you guys hear me? Is this working? Away from the wall? I agree, I agree.
Thank you.
All right, so is this one? Okay, I can hear it. Hi, my name is Logan Merritts and I'm here to share the William Tannet student report. So, the last black and white event, the 5K run, ran on April 24th. And on April 27th, all students were asynchronous because SAT testing was happening at William Tannet. The Sixth Annual Behind the Lens Film Festival premiered on Thursday, May 6th. This year's virtual showcase features student filmmakers from William Tannet, Clinger Middle School, and Law College Middle School. Pfizer vaccinations have just recently been administered to students at school. The first dose was given yesterday, May 10th, and students are expected to receive their second dose later in June. The first wave of AP testing has begun. Students taking their in-person tests arrive here at Swan Way during school to take their exams. Other students taking online tests will be taking their exams later this month and possibly into June. Keystone testing will take place May 24th to the 27th. During these days, all students not taking the test will be virtual. Senior prom is scheduled for Friday, May 21st. It will take place outside on the turf football field. Patterpuff online practices and meetings have started last week and will occur until the day of the event on May 27th at 6:30. Mr. Tannet candidates Josh Kamut, Chris Colletta, Billy DiMarco, Shane Hubbard, Drake Hasmerich, Ryan Madnick, Jay Stanfield, Mike Scheller, Dom Solpizio, and Dylan Whistler will be featured during the event Friday, June 4th at 7:00 PM, and the event will be aired virtually. That was the Tannet report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Logan, we just wanted to give you a certificate of appreciation.
Oh!
For outstanding dedication and contributions for the Centennial School District. And thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, next we have MBIT Elizabeth Bonderanko. Do we have her?
Hi.
Hello.
Um, hello, my name is Elizabeth Bonderanko and I am a junior at William Tannet High School. I'm a Level 200 student in the Public Safety Program at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology. Current happenings, the MBIT automotive team of Ryan Pressman from Central Bucks South and Logan Kirby from Central Bucks West won first place in the Philadelphia Top Tech Challenge Competition, which was held virtually. The students each received more than $100,000 in scholarship and tools for their first-place win. The Level 100s in the Public Safety Program successfully completed and passed both the written and skills tests for the American Heart Association Basic Life Support for CPR and AED. This is quite the achievement. Students from various technical schools throughout Pennsylvania, including Middle Bucks, completed in the 2021 Schools Skills USA State Competitions. The competitions were held virtually in April. And it has 18 competitors participating who earned a total of 16 medals. 12 gold medal winners, one silver medal winner, and three bronze medal winners. The gold medal winners will advance to the National Skills USA Leadership and Skills Conference in June of 2021. This year will be the highest number of MBIT competitors we have ever seen going to nationals. Multimedia students Billy Kubaki from Central Bucks South and Luke Whitney from New Hope Silvery received the Best Director Award for the film Earl in the 2021 Greensville Field Youth Film Festival. The Middle Bucks Chapter of National Technical Honors Society inducted 23 new student members on Thursday, April 29th in a virtual ceremony. The mission of the NTHS is to honor students' achievement and leadership in career and technical education. Promote educational excellence, awards, scholarships, and enhance career opportunities to the NTHS membership. Our annual senior recognition ceremony will be held on Monday, June 7th at 6:30 PM in the William Tannet High School Alumni Stadium. Please mark your calendars and plan to attend this event to acknowledge and congratulate the class of 2021. MBIT is hosting a summer career exploration program for students entering 7th, 8th, 9th, or 10th grade during the week of July 12th. Students are invited to register for eight courses offered during the week-long program. Additional information and registration can be found at www.mbit.org. We would like to remind everyone that you can learn more about the current happenings at MBIT by liking us on Facebook, following us on Instagram and Twitter, and viewing our videos on YouTube. Thank you for your time and opportunity to keep you informed about what is happening at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology, preparing tomorrow's workforce today.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth.
If I may, Elizabeth mentioned that Middle Bucks won 12 gold medals at the Skills USA competition. I just want to add that they only give out 20 total statewide. So, Middle Bucks won 12 of the 20 possible gold medals in the state, and I think that says a lot about the program we have. We do that.
Thank you. Ms. Bolden?
Good evening, everyone. I am going to give a presentation on our social-emotional and academic learning for Centennial School District. Social-emotional learning is a term that we often hear. We talked about it before COVID, but after COVID, it has become more prevalent, a more prevalent need in many school districts. So, social-emotional learning is an integral part of education and human development in general. It's the process through which all people acquire and apply knowledge, skills, add to development of healthy identities, managing emotions, and achieving personal goals. It's how we feel about ourselves and how we establish and maintain relationships, supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. There are four, five key elements of social-emotional learning that I would like to speak on this evening. Self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. All five of these elements are very important when we discuss social-emotional learning and social-emotional well-being. Self-awareness, it starts with self-awareness. First, the individual has to be aware of their strengths, their weaknesses, what are they feeling? Before you can build relationships with others, oftentimes you need to know about yourself. All right? And that's having the ability to recognize how you feel and how you connect with others. It's your positive mindset, being well-grounded. Then there's self-management. How do we self-regulate? Self-management requires skills and attitudes that give us the ability to regulate our own emotions. This includes delaying gratification, managing stress, controlling impulses, persevering, and meeting our goals. Social awareness, we need the first two key elements in able to be aware and understand what's happening around us, and our ability to empathize, understand, feel compassion, to recognize social norms and behaviors that are appropriate for school, home, and in our community. Relationships, how do we build relationships with one another? How do we maintain positive relationships with one another? How do we negotiate? How do we manage relationships in school, post-secondary education, with our family members, and even on our jobs and in our community? We need social-emotional learning and wellness in order to do this well. So, the other one was making decisions. So, having those key elements helps us to make decisions, positive decisions, appropriate decisions, so that we can maintain relationships and reach our goals. Centennial School District has always had supports in place for supporting social-emotional learning. We start with school counselors, we have social workers, school psychologists in our elementary schools, school-wide positive behavior interventions and support, student assistant program, partnership with the Peace Center. We contract with Lakeside in-school counseling, Lakeside mobile support, and most recently, Effective School Solutions Mental Health Counseling. That seems like a lot, but at this point, it is not meeting all of the needs of our students. Social-emotional wellness and learning is not new because of COVID. It has been a concern for many, for many, over the years. Just in 2017, our school district adopted a relationship with Effective School Solutions to have two mental health, actually to have a few mental health counselors in some of our school buildings. And now we continue with two of those mental health counselors. But COVID, the COVID pandemic, has had a major effect on our lives and for children as well as adults. Not just parents at home, but our staff, our teachers, bus drivers, all of us who work in schools. And some of the stresses, COVID-19 caused a lot of stress and anxiety, and so many people are feeling fear, anger, sadness, worry, numbness, frustration, challenges with eating, energy, difficulty concentrating, making decisions, sleeping, physical reactions, headaches, body pains, chronic health problems, mental health conditions, and there has been an increase in the use of alcohol, tobacco, and other substances. So, COVID didn't make it better. Where do we go from here as a Centennial School District? Well, tonight, I would like to put a few things before this board and our community. One is, we currently are contracting mental health counselors with Effective School Solutions. At this time, we find that it would be cost-effective and will have the ability to service more students if we, at no cost, to additional cost to the district, just a reallocation of funds, employ our own behavioral mental health counselors. With the current contract with Effective School Solutions, we are only able to have, with our two counselors we have, we are only able to service 20 students. We believe that if we have our own mental health counselors, we could have a plan to service more students. So, again, this would be no additional cost to the district, it would be a reallocation of funds, and the mental health counselors would be Centennial School District employees. The other position is a social-emotional academic learning coordinator. Now, throughout this presentation, I've mentioned social-emotional learning. We have added academic to this because there have been times where many school districts and organizations have looked at providing mental health support services as a third tier, as students who have, to students who have the most intense needs. But our proposal is to integrate social-emotional learning into the education for all of our students. We will teach our students about self-regulation, relationship skills, self-awareness, social awareness, decision-making. And we would like to, we're proposing a grant-funded, three-year position as a social-emotional academic learning coordinator, who will help us develop a district's social-emotional academic learning plan and implement that plan. The social-emotional, here's a description of the social-emotional and academic learning coordinator. This is not a position where someone, a current employee, takes on extra responsibilities. We believe that social-emotional and academic learning is so important in this district that we need someone whose sole job, sole responsibility, is to help Centennial School District develop a plan, provide professional development to our teachers, support our students, be a liaison between families and the school district, so that we can move forward with social-emotional wellness. Putting a great emphasis on social-emotional and academic learning, just as important as reading and math. The behavioral mental health counselors, as I mentioned, we already have behavioral mental health counselors, but it is, we contract with a company. Having this ourselves, having behavioral mental health counselors become Centennial School District employees gives us the flexibility to service more students. This is beyond school counseling. This is not just a school counselor. These would be clinical licensed counselors, maybe a psychologist, a clinical social worker, a clinical counselor. There would be family sessions, individual sessions for our students, supporting the teacher and the students, small group sessions for the students, and we think that this is great. In 2017, we began a working relationship with Effective School Solutions. And during the 2017 board presentation from our People Services Director, it was presented as a temporary program, a temporary support. And that's why we, the Centennial School District, invested in Effective School Solutions. But as we have experienced the support of mental health counseling in our district, we believe that this is a continued need. It is cost-effective for us to employ the individual, ourselves, individuals, because this would be two positions, not one. Again, at no additional cost to the district, just a reallocation of funds. It might cost us less than what we're contracting out depending on the experience of the individuals who apply, who are chosen for this position. But it's, again, it's different than our school counselors, our social workers. These are licensed clinical mental health counselors. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
I fully support the program, but one of the questions everybody always asks is, what happens after the funding runs out? So, I'm going to ask it a different way.
Okay.
Which is, is this something that can be absorbed into our overall program? Or do you expect that we'll need to keep this position filled?
We expect it to be able to absorb, be absorbed in our overall programming. However, the three years will give us more information on how much additional support or that Centennial needs, or if we need to, you know, if we need to continue, or if the three years is enough. This is something new for us. So, having it as a permanent position, I think we need to spend some time with it as a grant, so that we can see how this position integrates into the Centennial Plan.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Thank you. Thank you for all the information, Ms. Bolden. This is an amazing program, and I think that the past year has really brought a lot of need, shined a big light on social-emotional health. It's something that, to me, there may be folks out there saying, oh, we're talking about our feelings, we're talking about, you know, just do it, just get over, you know, deal with it. But there's something to be said for moving forward in a proactive manner. Social-emotional health leads to emotional intelligence, and that emotional intelligence helps our students to go out into the world, not just interacting with their family members or their friends, also being successful in the workplace.
Yes.
And this teaches us, and some folks get it at home more so than others, but standardizing it and de-stigmatizing this helps us to give an opportunity to everyone.
Yes.
So, I see nothing but good things that can come from this, and it really creates an opportunity to bring awareness to all the families.
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Okay, so, first of all, thank you. I appreciate that you made it clear, the financial aspect, that there, it's just reallocations and it's grant funding. I do have a question about that grant funding portion. What grant is it? Is it Esser?
Yes.
Okay. So, are we looking at the possibility of maybe finding other grant money after, I know three years is a long time, but it's something we start looking into, that we might be able to find an alternative grant funding source for this position after those three years?
I believe that schools, school districts, Departments of Education are coming to the realization, the understanding that social-emotional and academic, it's not just social-emotional learning, but it's social-emotional and academic learning, how it is truly an integral part of educating our students. So, from what I am seeing as far as professional developments, from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the federal government, and New Jersey, I believe that there will be supports. But I don't know what they are, but I do believe that school districts are moving in the direction of really supporting the whole child.
And we're also making it clear in any job posting that this is only a three-year position?
The grant, the coordinator, yes. It says three-year grant position, but the mental health counselors stay.
Right, well, that's, we have, we're just reallocating funds for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you very much. Hopefully, we're well on the way to putting the COVID in the rearview mirror.
I hope so, sir.
So, I don't know, going forward, hopefully, we can return to some degree of what used to be normal. Whether these will all be still as severe as they are today, hopefully, that will not be the case. Secondly, I know the county of Bucks spends multi-millions of dollars in behavioral health, mental health, and have liaisons that are paid for, psychologists and others, with school districts. So, I was just curious what role that played. And finally, in reading your, which I have to wade through the educational jargon, but...
I tried, Mr. Martin.
But, but, just to clear up for me, this will be achieved through the use of board-based programs. What are board-based programs?
Hold on, which...
Was that a typo? Was it supposed to be broad-based?
Broad, it should be broad.
Yeah, I read this stuff. I read it.
I appreciate that, broad. Broad-based, it's not on the board to come up with a program.
I didn't know what a board-based program was.
Thank you for catching that, because that would have gone in our posting.
See that? Now, if you could just explain for, finally, I don't want...
Go ahead.
The relationship between what the county and the people they have provide to school districts, and when, why then, school districts do it themselves? Is it inadequate, or what's the deal there?
It's not inadequate, it's just not enough for all of the districts, for the individual needs. I will tell you that one of the things Dr. Best and I were discussing this week regarding the coordinator and the plan for the district, was the collaboration with the Bucks County Department of Health and some local mental health agencies and support. So, that will be a part of the plan moving forward, and the coordinator would help us make the connection. And that's one of the reasons why, right now, it is a grant-funded position, because we, again, we need someone whose sole job is to focus on getting Centennial all the supports needed, and many of them can be already in our community. But I will tell you that oftentimes, family members, parents have trouble getting appointments with doctors' offices for mental health, and even things in the county, because there's such a great need right now. And as you mentioned, maybe as we begin to recover from COVID, there will be more resources readily available for our families.
One of the salary ranges for these positions, it's not listed here, approximately, what...
I can tell you. So, the mental health counselor positions would be a CEA position, so it would fall under the contract, the CEA contract. The coordinator position is a 12-month position. The salary range is 80 to $110,000. It is dependent upon the person's expertise, their experience, and we did look at, we did evaluate coordinator and kind of supervisor positions that are similar for Bucks County, so that we could have an appropriate range. Okay.
Ms. Brancato?
I just wanted to ask, behavioral specialist? That's a CEA position you just said, that was one of my questions. And then, what level of... Sorry. What level of education would a behavioral specialist that we would like to apply, what would they need?
So, the mental health counselors, because we have behavior analysts already. The mental health counselors would be a master's degree or above, a minimum of a master's, because that clinical, in order to have the clinical licensure, you're usually a master's level.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Goddixon?
So, we currently have, you know, a ton of support, you know, from the outside, it looks like. What's going to happen to that? Are we going to put them aside and forget about them? We're going to put them aside and forget about them, or are we going to have them running concurrent, concurrently?
No. So the Effective School Solutions, where, which we currently contract the mental health counselors, we are ending our agreement with them this school year. So it will not be running concurrently. The only other, um, and any other services we have, we will continue with them. Um, as the coordinator comes into place here, they will help us with the plan and know what other services we might need to, um, employ ourselves, or if we should continue contracting.
So will we continue with Lakeside in, in school counseling?
Yes, yes, we will. Yes, we will.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just have to say that many parents have reached out regarding, regarding this whole situation, and that they really, really want to use some form of clinical counselor or clinical psychologist, or however. So I think it's a, it's a great idea that we're doing this. I mean, the outreach was, I mean, we, we've heard it, like, so let's just let the community know that, you know, they asked for it and we're responding.
Yes.
We, we understand the need.
Yes. And I look forward to, um, presenting more information of our plan as we develop, develop it over the summer with Dr. Best and our new coordinator.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Dr. Baden Superintendent report?
So I want to take this opportunity to first start off by thanking, uh, everyone in the Centennial, uh, community, uh, both internal and external. Uh, I think that, uh, Mr. Martin's comment, uh, was spot-on, that we're hoping and, and, uh, excited about hopefully seeing a, a light at the end of the tunnel, that we're making progress, uh, to the other side, uh, to what I would say, um, would be a, a new norm, because there are things that we know that we will need to leave behind, because we learned some good things that we can do forward, and there are some things that we definitely, uh, want to continue and bring back. Uh, so over the past, uh, couple weeks, uh, some changes have happened that many of you know about, uh, so we have to talk about transitioning forward also. Next. So the first part is update where we are with the COVID, with the transition for the link there is to the dashboard. We did not need to post another dashboard. Uh, you can go to that link and take a look for yourself for the current status of the county and our, our COVID cases. Next. Uh, May 4th, um, uh, Pennsylvania Department of Ed and the Pennsylvania Department of Health released an update. Uh, the governor had a press conference, uh, that he, uh, held, and then we received direct communication jointly from the Secretary of Health, Acting Secretary of Health, and Acting Secretary of Education to superintendents. Um, and the highlights of that are there. For the sake of time, I'm not going to read all those bullets, uh, but at the end of the day, as most of you know by now, that May 31st, um, Memorial Day, that, um, they're lifting the mitigation order except for masking. Uh, there's also a target of 70% of our Pennsylvanians for 18 and older to be fully vaccinated, and we're doing our part, which we will touch, uh, on a little bit about vaccination, uh, for there to remove the masking order. Uh, face corvings are still required, and a, a part of the safety of mitigation efforts, uh, you know, municipalities and school districts can and have been told that their, uh, mitigation efforts are, can be stricter if necessary to help contain, uh, any spread or spiking of, uh, COVID-19. And the recommendation is to, which we always do, we look, uh, at CDC, but we also look at DOH, both state and local. Uh, we do look at CHOP also, and we look a cross-section of all those, trying to make informed decisions, uh, as well as any guidance from legal counsel to make sure the district is in the most defensible position regarding their decisions. Uh, next. Uh, highlights of the masking, because that's the one significant outlier that will, uh, will still be in place. Uh, the full update, we've included a link for those who want to go to this presentation and take a look at it. But the more important thing that we wanted to highlight is that we have limitations with regards to our ability to address who and who is not fully vaccinated, which affects how we operate. We both have legal, ethical, and then there's operational limitation, meaning our capacity to deploy staff to address that. So decisions going forward in a district are affected by those limitations and our legal, ethical responsibilities. For example, our ability to discuss or not discuss people's current status with vaccination and other things of that nature. Uh, reminders or the precautions, they're just there to remind, I'm not going to read all those, uh, to everyone, but those are the key tenets that, uh, the district will continue to operate up under with regards to the masking order. Next. Uh, we'd like to update on our, uh, vaccination, uh, partnership. Um, one of our aggressive mitigation strategies, uh, we were partnering with, uh, a great partnership with Bucks County Health Department that really focused and helped us a lot out with, uh, uh, vaccination efforts with our staff, um, as well as testing. Uh, then recently, uh, as you know, and a student just spoke about, we had our first invas- uh, vaccination opportunity for our 16 and older students, uh, this past week, and then they will have it again on June 1st. I am happy to announce that we actually had started conversations last week, uh, about the anticipated release of, uh, Pfizer, uh, to 12 and 15-year-old students. Um, on Sunday, I received communication, uh, about an opportunity for another partnership. On Monday, uh, Ms. Prusler and her, as quick Johnny on the spot as always, uh, based on guidance, uh, was able to reach out to that potential partner and then work collaboratively with Dr. Best and the school, secondary school principals, and within less than 48 hours, we were able to turn around a plan, uh, to implement our 12 to 15-year-old student vaccination opportunity with AMI. Uh, so we will be, uh, also now rolling out a vaccination opportunity on May 20th, uh, for our 12 to 15-year, uh, year-old students, and then a second shot on, uh, June 11th. Uh, do want to remind our parents that there must be a signed permission slip as part of this process. Um, and AMI will be doing a scheduling. I think, uh, we had, what, three, roughly 350 already signed up? Dr. Best?
Yeah.
Uh, students already signed up, uh, for this opportunity. So we have, what we'd say, deployed, uh, locally in collaboration with Bucks County, and Rite Aid, who we want to publicly thank, who did a second round for adults, who then who took on our 16-year-old students, who actually was prepared to come to the table also. Uh, with our 12 to 15-year-old, and AMI jumped in, was ready to go, and we will continue talks and opportunities that Rite Aid is there also available to continue to support us to, to make sure that we are getting as many people the opportunity. I will say that this role that the district is playing is about access and opportunity. It is still choice. We're not in the business of determining who should or who should not, but we do want to make sure we create opportunities for access for people. It is a individual parental and household decision. Next. Uh, what's going to happen next year? Uh, this is, uh, to give the initial communication about what we're intending, uh, to do for next school year, uh, so people can start thinking about that light at the end of the tunnel and, uh, that new, hopefully, a new norm. Uh, so next, and anything I say here is obviously, if things change, are subject to change. But our goal is to, uh, open next school year in a full reopen instructional model. Uh, that's, we, we're lighter than the tunnel, we believe things are going to get better, and we're going to plan that way. But I will tell you also that in a meeting with the county superintendents and with also Dr. Damsker and others on the call, we also have to plan for contingencies if something happens, and a lot of that has to do with the variants that have shown up that they've asked us to be aware of. Um, it took into account our thought in this process about the May 4th, uh, communication from the State Department, uh, the May 4th communication from the governor, uh, and then, you know, we also are moving forward with plans to offer asynchronous, uh, fully remote virtual instruction for those parents who choose and may feel uncomfortable, uh, still at that time, as part of all of our instructional models. We are in conversation with a third-party company about synchronous opportunities that may or may not be available. Uh, but our goal is to offer, uh, full reopen, and then an asynchronous opportunity, uh, with a, uh, new partner, a new model for that, to be improved upon what was offered in the past, uh, for asynchronous. Uh, we are trying to find a synchronous version, but we cannot guarantee that, uh, as of yet. A great partnership opportunity, but we have to look at cost factors and our capacity. Next. Uh, so when we say, uh, full reopen, uh, there's a part option 1A and 1B contending, depending on the conditions, uh, that we are facing at that time. 1A is just everything is what it was, um, uh, pre-COVID, i- is what I would tell you, and that's our plan. Should we have any concerns with, I just say my term, I'm just making it up, straggling issues that they tell us about? We will still then look at implementing 1B, which is currently kind of similar to what we're doing, so we're in a modified full reopening. So still try to have kids in, uh, at school, but may have to tweak the schedule if we have issues or concerns, uh, that exist, uh, that come from the state and our local health department, uh, or CDC. Uh, again, advice is to be thoughtful and contingent, and be prepared to be, uh, flexible depending on the circumstances. Uh, the next slides are just reminders of the schedules that were in place. So, you know, 1A is just a normal schedule pre-COVID, so I didn't put that up there. Uh, 1, uh, you know, if we honor 1B option, it's very, you know, what we're doing at this point in time, um, that you can see, and it's just a reminder. Next slide. Five-day schedule for a high school, next slide. And then MBIT students, uh, that was, uh, the, the schedule we had operated on. The disclaimer, we want to make sure everyone is there, is that we also have to always work in collaboration, uh, with MBIT and, uh, the school districts, uh, get together. Uh, so this is the foundational model. It could change based on what the schedules are with us, the other districts that are also attending, uh, Middle Bucks. Uh, so that could change, but this is, uh, just to give an idea of what we start with, uh, for that schedule. Should we have to be a 1B option? Next. Uh, this is, again, the, the, the schedule laid out for Klinger and Log. Um, just a reminder, it's a current one that we're operating on now. Next. Elementary schools, uh, in, whether in 1A or 1B, would, you know, full schedule, like they are currently now. Next. Um, you know, should we have or be declared to have to have a different model depending on health circumstances? Option 2 would be our blended hybrid model using a cohort method, um, asynchronous, and we may use synchronous, uh, depending on the standards and that we're up under and conditions that we are having, uh, to deal with. Uh, at this time, again, we plan to offer full, offer asynchronous, fully remote virtual instruction choice via the third-party provider, you know, no matter what model we are sitting in. Uh, if health conditions, uh, deteriorated to a point, uh, at the height of COVID or some other time, uh, we still will be prepared, uh, to pull the trigger on virtual, uh, full remote. Uh, that would be synchronous, though, with our teachers, should that happen. Uh, again, we hope we never leave anything in the option 1 phase is our hope and plan. Next slide. As we continue to close out the year, uh, we will, uh, we will continue, uh, the current instructional model to finish out the school year, to create some continuity, uh, because this is what people know now, we don't want to create any more changes and minimize the disruptions as we try to close out the year. We're trying to focus on the end-of-the-year opportunities that students look forward to and get as many of them in place, and also planning, um, to move forward. We will continue to monitor communications from the state and health, uh, agencies that they send us. Uh, we're already looking at what happens next year for the full reopen in a traditional schedule. Uh, I do want to highlight that as you go into next year, to make parents and the community aware that we will continue to move forward with the, the new modified, uh, virtual snow day schedule, uh, that we, uh, had in place, uh, this past year, um, that we use, because it allows us to get the school day in and then still also allow our families and students to have somewhat of a break on a snow day, uh, that occurs. Um, the schools are planning and shifting where possible, uh, to have their, uh, end-of-year activities in person, um, as long as we're able to comply with the masking order and guidelines. Uh, I will tell you that because of the issue with, uh, part of the masking being tied to vaccination and, and who is and who is not, on the call with, uh, Dr. Damsker and other superintendents, uh, the easiest thing to do was to err on the side of mask, rather than get into any back and forth with who is and who not, because we can't, if we know it, we're not supposed to reveal it, and honestly, we don't want to create a situation where we are, uh, creating conflict and friction, uh, with people regarding their current, uh, status. And, uh, and that gets to what I shared earlier, that we have legal and ethical and operational considerations that play into that, uh, situation. Uh, but the schools are working, uh, quickly to turn and try to make accommodations to do as many of those, uh, past activities that were enjoyable and appreciated by our community in person, as well as complying with, uh, the state, uh, guidelines. Uh, next. That was fast, but I don't want to read to you, and we put a lot of information so that people can go back and see it also, uh, to remind them.
Ms. Bankata?
Um, so if the governor removes the mask requirement at whatever time, will we also remove the mask requirement?
Uh, we will, at this point, be, uh, complying with the law. If the governor removes it, uh, then we will follow, uh, the order to, to not require masks.
Okay. Um, and the other question I had was, um, you were touching on end-of-year festivities?
Mm-hmm.
So the one question a lot of the parents are asking, and I, and I did put it in the email, is they want to know if they can have one graduation instead of several?
Uh, we met on, uh, Friday, I believe, uh, and, uh, there are a number of logistical things that were discussed at the high school. Uh, they were, did it put out the communication, Dr. Best, or not, uh, to get parental input that we talked about? Because there are others who we've heard that feel differently, so they decided to put out a survey, I believe.
Yes, so on, on Monday morning, uh, an e-alert came out from the high school to the 12th grade parents, uh, asking them, you know, a simple question, based on the, uh, some of the restrictions that have been lifted, would you prefer, uh, to have one large graduation, where each family would receive two tickets, or would you prefer to stick with three graduations, where we can give four tickets to each family? Uh, we asked them to complete that by tomorrow. Right now, we have close to 250 responses, and it's, it's almost a coin toss right now, um, of what people want and don't want. So, um, sometimes it's good to ask questions, but that somewhat further complicates our decision-making process, uh, because we have heard from people who want that, and we've also heard from people who don't feel comfortable. So we'll, we'll, we'll analyze our data tomorrow.
So it's very important for these, you sent it in an email? I'm, I'm sorry.
We sent an e-alert, and they also received a text message, uh, alerting them of this survey.
So it's very important for these parents to fill that out?
That would be very helpful.
If they would like to be, you know, if they would like to be part of the decision-making process?
Yep.
Um, they need to fill out that survey, and it needs to be done by when?
We had asked by tomorrow, uh, but, uh, if, if we don't have enough responses by tomorrow, we'll, we'll extend it by a day or two.
Okay.
We just, we just honestly want to get people's feedback, and it's a really, really quick survey. I mean, it can be filled out in 30 seconds or less on your phone.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
The height of the, the issue that was revealed, uh, as I shared, was that, uh, as Ms. Bankata said, you know, there were parents who asked about one, but we also were getting questions about staying. In fact, I had a conversation, uh, with Logan, uh, because she was participating in a committee on the mission vision, and even she shared the toughness of that thought, you know, oh, I got more people, or, or I've made plans. Some people made plans with regards to the schedule that was already released. So we thought it was prudent after the meeting on Friday to at least get some semblance of where it is, and we actually talked about it. It may fall right down the middle on us, but we at least wanted to give a chance to hear, uh, you know, broader opportunity.
Any, Mr. Promowski?
Um, so a quick question about the whole vaccination thing. Um, obviously, right now, I know we can't do this because we are limited, um, but we do require students to have certain vaccines now, correct?
The, the ones that are required by state law, yes.
So that, so we would just follow state law?
Yes.
If this, if the governor says that in the future they have to get a COVID vaccine, we, then we have to do that?
Then we would.
That was my question. Yep.
Mr. Goddixon?
Uh, this, this is, is really great to hear that, you know, the students, or at least students aged 12 through graduation, you know, has the opportunity to get vaccinated. Now, my, my question is, not in regards to the vaccination, but more in regards to testing, particularly when we have students that have come down with COVID and they have been in close contact. Is there a way for us to get more involved with getting more rapid, you know, uh, testing of students that's been in close contact? of students that's been in close contact?
I want to ask Nurse Fresler to join me, uh, but, uh, it is my understanding that there was, uh, an effort on the county to, uh, maintain, uh, some of testing assistance, uh, for families, uh, but as a district, uh, we don't, no.
And I think too, the question that you're asking is about, um, so we follow the guidelines for, um, quarantine, which is 10 days, and some of the school districts are following testing. If you test negative, you can get out earlier. You have to test between day five and seven of exposure. You can return at day seven and we are not following that. We are following the 10-day. But as Dr. Ben said, the Bucks County Department of Health luckily has been providing us with these testing centers, which we have used a lot. And I do want to thank them and especially Dr. Damsker and all the nurses. They have given us a lot of guidance. I reached out to them today. I had to reach out to them about, uh, questions about a student. So we really do appreciate their guidance, but that's pretty much what we've been doing.
Wait, wait, wait. So, so close contact. So if I sit with you at lunch for 15 minutes and you end up getting COVID, I'm quarantined for 10 days?
So, um, I'll start with if you're fully vaccinated, two weeks out from your first shot or both shots, you are not identified as a close contact. That's why we're trying to get people vaccinated. But in general, if you are at less than six feet for longer than 15 minutes, you would be identified as a close contact and you would have to quarantine for 10 days. What's tricky about COVID is that when the person is contagious, it's two days prior to the onset of illness, including their day. So that's three days. Now that we're back in school, five days, which we want, we want our kids in school, that gives us more time when we have to contact trace. People think they have allergies, people think a lot of different things. Then we run into the problems of identifying close contacts, having multiple students and putting families in really difficult situations that we absolutely do not want to do. But that are, that is the guidelines. We're very careful when we contact trace. We don't just randomly assign. We involve our teachers, our staff, our drivers, our aides, everyone.
So, so if I, so if I'm in close contact with you?
Yep.
And then five days later, I get a negative COVID test, I'm still not allowed to go back to school?
That is correct because we are not following that if you get tested between day five and seven, you can return at day seven. It's not really a modified quarantine because that's a whole different type of a situation, but it's along those lines that you're te- you're testing out of quarantine is what you're doing when you do that.
So some kids are, some kids are quarantining more than once in a month.
That is correct. Unfortunately, we have had some students who have had that happen to them in both our private schools and our public schools. I've spoken to many parents at my private school at Nativity who joke about their children who tend to be social, who then wind up being close contacts. It's unfortunately not negotiable. If you're a close contact, you're a close contact, you have to, you know, do your quarantine. But it's really frustrating for parents. We, we appreciate that. It, it's not a phone call we certainly want to make to families. We understand what we're doing.
Okay. But it's wedding season.
I know, and it is prom season and I did put in the announcements and I'll make this public for everyone to know for our students and our parents, we want every single student to go to the prom who can go, who has said they wanted to go. The prom is May 21st. Tomorrow is May 12th, so that starts our 10-day. We don't want to have anyone miss the prom because of COVID. So we ask our kids to watch their distancing, their masking, their hand washing, be careful about who you hang out with outside of school. We, we really are shooting for 100% attendance at the prom. So we're going to remind the kids every day, so.
Are we limiting, uh, students from outside of Centennial?
Um, Dr. Ben or Dr. Best, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really sure.
Doing it from memory from the meeting that they are allowed to, uh, there's a certain number, I believe, of guests they're allowed to have, Dr. Best.
Uh, for, for the prom, if the question is outside guests, yes. If, if a student has a significant other who attends another high school, they are permitted to come.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay.
And remember, the prom is, it's outside in the stadium, so we have plenty of room to space there.
Now, did I hear no dancing or was, was that another school I heard that from?
That reminds me of Footloose.
Exactly, exactly. Exactly, oh no.
There, there will be dancing.
No, there were parents from our district who said, oh, I heard there's no dancing.
No, somebody might have floated a rumor.
And my daughter said, oh my God, Mom, it's like Footloose. So there is dancing.
There is dancing, yes.
All right. Not like, not like our moms danced, like far away.
It'll, it'll be.
Because these kids don't dance far away.
We will be responsibly distanced.
Okay, all right. So no Footloose in warm and stuff.
No Footloose in warm and stuff.
Good, good, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, then we're moving on to community comments. Okay. All right, then we have consent agenda. Uh, Ms. Allen?
Thank you.
Now?
Is there one person going to go? I guess they didn't show up.
Thank you, Dr. Ben. Okay, 5.5 consent agenda. Does anyone would?
Um, I want to pull 54A just because I think Ms. Robal does enough that she deserves the honor of having a separate vote. 54A. Just, just for a separate vote, no questions or anything.
Any others?
5.1 minutes. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.1A approves the minutes from the April 6, 2021 Work Session Regular School Board Meeting. 5.1B approves the minutes from the April 13, 2021 Special Board Meeting. 5.1C approves the minutes from the April 27, 2021 Committee of the Home Meeting. Can I get a voice vote? Uh, are there any other, any discussion? I'm sorry.
You can read all five.
Oh, just read all of five? Okay, we're moving along. 5.2 Personnel. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.2A approves resignations, 5.2B approves authorization to employ, 5.2C leaves of absence, 5.2D approves change of status, 5.2E approves curricular addition. Uh, 5.3 Exceptions to policy, none. 5.4, 5.4B approves the appointment of Honorable Bernie O'Neill as the Centennial School District Representative to the Bucks County Area Vocational Technical School Authority effective upon the resignation of Stephen Relis, the current representative. 5.6 Conferences and travel, none. 5.7 Bids and quotes, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.7A awards liquid propane, gas, commodity, and delivery services bid 2021-16 to Sharp Energy for a three-year term beginning July 1, 2021. Base, uh, bid not to exceed $173,608.50. 5.7B awards the athletic equipment and supplies bid 2021-08 to aluminum athletic equipment, BSM Sports Colorado, Colorado Time Systems, Gilman Gear, MFAC, Nasco Pyramid School Products, Riddell, S&amp;S Worldwide, and School Specialty in the aggregate amount of $42,758.07. 5.7C awards art supply bid 2021-07 is indicated on the attached bid tabulation to Black Art Material Cascade School Supplies, Kurtz Brothers, WB Mason, Medco Supply, Nasco National Art and School Supplies, Pyramid School Products, S&amp;S Worldwide, Sheffield Pottery in the aggregate amount of $52,215.93. 5.7D awards furniture bid 2021-14 to Cascade School Supply, Kurtz Furniture, WB Mason, Next Gen Furniture, and Verica Incorporated in the aggregate amount of $15,622.28. 5.7E authorizes participation in and accepts the current and subsequent bids and awards of the following joint purchasing programs for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Association of Educational Purchasing Agencies, AEP-A, BCIU Cooperative Purchasing Group, Byboard Cooperative Purchasing, Co-Stars, ENI Cooperative Services, Keystone Purchasing Network, KPN, uh, Munisibid, National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, MCPA, Omnia, formerly NJPA, PADGS, State Contracts, PEPPM, Southeastern PA Natural Gas Consortium, Southeastern PA Buying Group, SEPA, the Cooperative Purchasing Network, TCBN, and U.S. General Services Administration Cooperative Purchasing Program. That was a long one. 5.8 Assembly Speakers and Programs, none. 5.9 Contracts, Licenses, and Services. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 5.9A, um, approves the agreement between the district and the Council of Southeast Pennsylvania Inc. for the Student Assistance Program, SAP, for the 2021-2022 school year. District costs $73,000 to be paid by federal grant. 5.9B approves a 2021 Extended Year ESY Contract with A Step Up Academy. District cost not to exceed $9,790. 5.9C approves a 2021 ESY Contract with Keystone Freedom Academy. District cost not to exceed $15,750. 5.9D approves the request for Centennial School District and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit to enter into a Use of Funds Agreement for the Implementation of Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Part B IDEA, award for the 2021-2022 school year. 5.10 Textbooks, none. 5.11 Acceptance of Donations, Grants and Requests, none. 5.12 Changes to Academic Programs, Positions, Siphons, none.
I'll second.
Can we have a voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Hearing, none.
Just for the record, was that, okay, 9-0.
9-0. 9-0-0. Thank you. Moving to 5.4A, I believe it was A. Be it resolved that Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the appointment of Mary Ann Robald as Board Secretary for a four-year term effective July 1, 2021. All those, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Passes 9-0-0. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Robal.
Uh, I could just add, uh, with the appointment of Representative O'Neill to MBIT, there's, he has so many qualifications, but to, to the best I can determine, he's the only student from, graduated from, uh, Centennial School District who was not only a member of the National Honor Society, but a member of the National Technical Honor Society.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. 6.0, does anyone wish to pull anything? Moving along. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors 6.1 approves a letter of agreement between the Centennial School District and the Centennial Education Association regarding the Calendar Memorandum of Understanding Through the End of the Current Collective Bargaining Agreement as per the attached. 6.2 Approves the Title and Job Description for the Grant-Funded Social, Emotional, Academic Learning Coordinator Position as per the attached. 6.3 Approves the Title and Job Description for the Behavioral and Mental Health Counselor Position, Reallocation of Funds as per the attached. Can I second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Want to get a voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes 9-0-0. Thank you.
Policies, Mr. Promovski?
We have six policies that we are presenting for initial distribution tonight. Does anybody have any questions on any of them?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I have a question on the proposed policy number 817. Um, as I look at this, it's a new policy. It says it's recommended by PSBA and the Superintendent of Schools. And I was wondering why there is a need for a responsible contractor policy. Responsible contracting policies eliminate the possibility of firms who are not represented by unions of bidding on work. In many cases, those firms are equally as responsive as firms who are represented and covered by responsible contracting, uh, ordinances or policies. The Justice Center in Doylestown was built by a non-union, although there were union subcontractors there. Anne's Choice, right across the way, was built by non-union contractors. Several large paving contractors would not qualify under this ordinance or this policy. Adoption of this policy would preclude many significant and responsible firms from bidding on work and could potentially cost the district money if there was a lower bid than was put forward or would be excluded by having a responsible contracting ordinance. So number one, I don't know what we have now that this replaces. And number two, I don't know what the reason possibly is to have this policy and why in the world it would be recommended by the Superintendent of Schools and the PSBA.
So.
Can I? I, I can't raise my hand.
Let Ms. Crossin, she wanted to say something first.
So I just wanted to, I just wanted to address, um, I was outside of Tenet, um, and I was looking up, I don't know, I don't know the last time you were at Tenet. When you look up on the awning and you see, um, all those nails coming through, have you seen that? Okay. So I was looking at that and I'm thinking to myself, yes?
Go ahead.
I was thinking, I was thinking to myself, how, how is this possible? How is this community school that we've spent a lot of money on, I'm looking up and why am I seeing these nails? How did that fall through the loop? So I'm thinking to myself, hmm, something doesn't make sense. And then I heard, um, a speech from Jean D. Geralamo, 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 um, about, um, responsible contractors. Um, and then I listened to that and I thought to myself, well, if Bucks County can do it, if Worms or Township can do it, then why wouldn't I do it for my community? Why wouldn't we try to, try to get the most qualified workmen? Now, this is not saying that it has to be union, it's saying you have to be skilled, you have to have been trained. That's what it's saying. So when I look up there, and actually I took a picture before I came here, and Nate, would you be able to put that up there? When you see this, you're going to think to yourself, how is this acceptable? This is right before I came to this meeting. All coming through. Why am I looking at that at my high school?
I don't think we should be discussing something that's possibly litigation.
Well, regardless, that's, that's, that's my thought behind it as to why don't I have the best? Now, I'm not saying it has to be union, I'm saying you have to be qualified.
And I will add that I, I have, I read the policy, the word union doesn't actually appear anywhere in the policy, um, as long as they have the apprenticeship, they have the training they needed, that does not have to be.
You're, that, that's a, that's a subterfuge. We've many, there's many contractors who are very responsible, employ a lot of people who are now being excluded from being able to bid on school district work for no reason.
Mr. Martin, if I could speak just for a second, this is Dan Greaser from the Solicitor's Office. Um, as far as that concern goes, uh, our firm has many clients who have responsible contracting ordinances or policies. And we have lots of firms that bid on contracts that aren't union, uh, firms, right? But they abide by these procedures. They get themselves involved with an apprenticeship program like the one listed in this policy so that they can bid on contracts and they're not union, uh, traditional union-type construction firms. So I understand your concern. I think that's a concern we hear often with this policy. So, I understand your concern, I think that's a concern we hear often with this policy, but it's, it's really, we see a lot of firms that aren't union, that abide by the policy and then successfully bid on projects.
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Miller?
I, am I invisible over here, I'm just wondering?
No, Mr. Miller's had his hand up since before you.
I really wasn't asking you, John, I was asking Patty, but thank you, Frank. I have a floor, I'm in charge of this.
I'll grab you right next.
I have heard several stories of school districts where this was more costly. I have a couple concerns. Number one, our current policy does require that the bidder be responsible. If this policy were to be approved, how would we assure that any subcontractors used by the bidder are also responsible? And, and with that, in instances, I'm not referring to any specific instance, but are we aware of any instance in our district where there was a problem that was caused by a bidder who did not meet the requirements of being a responsible bidder or responsible contractor?
Madam Chair, at some point, I do need to respond to Mr. Martin's question, but I do know you need to get Ms. Brancato.
Mrs. Brancato?
So, when you, when you say responsible contractor, and they have to have an apprenticeship program, so that would eliminate, let's just say, for instance, Robert Wharton B. has, Robert Wharton B. has a roofing company, and his three sons work for him, but they're not his apprentices, they're not an official apprenticeship program, so that would mean he can't bid on the job?
No, that does, that's not what it means, it means that his firm has to participate in an apprenticeship program.
That's what I'm telling you, they're not in an official apprenticeship program, he's been teaching his sons all of their lives, so he's out.
If, if it's a contract for over $300,000, right, this only applies to contracts over $300,000.
Right.
If it's a contract of that amount, the folks that apply for it have to be enrolled in, participating in an apprenticeship program.
So, what makes Mr. Wharton B. and his three sons, your welcome for the two additional children, two additional sons, what makes him any less qualified than the roofing company that my husband works for that is a union job?
Well, I can't speak to, I'm not familiar with his contracting company, but.
It's fake.
No, I understand that, I understand your.
I don't think we should count out the hard-working dad that raises his son, because I'm going to tell you something, my husband is really a hard worker, and he is a union guy.
So, you have a, a company of four individuals, and you're hypothetical here.
But I'm going to tell you that I had a, I had a construction company, and I was not a union construction company.
And you're going to want that.
And I had the hardest-working people, and I did see the nails Patty, Patty brought up, because I saw them when they got done years ago, because my roofing husband said, what the heck kind of roofers do you have? I don't think we can count out the hard-working companies just because they don't have an official apprenticeship program. If we want to say they have to be responsible contractors in the word just being responsible, and they have to be trained, that's one thing, but to say they have to have an apprenticeship program, I don't think that's fair.
Is it possible for me to get in at some point?
Yes, Andrew.
I, I just wanted to say, I mean, you know, having sat now for four years on this board, and what is it, three of which we've been dealing with, and we're far from done with a high school that, you know, obviously has some issues, I don't know what the provenance to the contractors, you know, I can't.
Again, I do not believe we should be discussing either.
All I'm saying, Mr. Miller, all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, to answer Mr. Martin's point in general, that to me makes manifest why any further thing that we can do to guarantee that the people who are brought in are being, are people who not only are themselves reputable, but hire the, you know, the best workers as well, you know, properly-trained workers. I mean, you can look at study after study after study, this kind of stuff, it can be a little bit more expensive, but the old adage is, you get what you pay for, I think we learned that the hard way here. Yes, you know, if, if someone's going through a proper apprenticeship program, union or not, that costs money, that means that the contractor might have to charge a little bit more, but you're guaranteed to get people who know what they're doing, and I think we're paying the price for not having had that.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
So, Mr. Martin, to answer your question, so, first of all, Centennial uses a template format, and so I would tell you, this did not come from P S B A, and I'll make sure that's corrected, but if you look at the way your policy reads, recognition for the need for the policy, why the superintendent's name gets attached to it, is a need to review or revise an existing policy or to develop a new policy may be brought to the attention of the board by citizens, students, staff members, and or board members. So, it was brought to the attention of the administration that way. Then, you know, we went through the process, which, you know, of this process, which requires it then to go forward through this process, which is a discussion. What can happen going forward is clarity of that being specific of how it was introduced too, but my job was to put it through the process once it was introduced.
That's recommended on the form that I'm looking at.
Well, yeah, I recommended to go through this process, which is Administrative Policy Review Committee, and also this discussion process for the board to discuss and review and make a decision. And I also chimed in with any of the concerns I had and modifications that were included in it, and now it's at the phase where you all chime in to discuss it.
May I ask why the solicitor's here tonight? This is the first time this year we've had a solicitor at our meeting, there must be a reason that we're going to pay.
Oh, absolutely.
$100 to have him here. He's certainly welcome, but why, why is he here this evening when he hasn't been here in all the other meetings that we've had this year?
Because of the, the process of this to get, you, you have available legal counsel consultation.
You anticipated it was going to be some discussion about the responsible contractor ordinance then, or policy.
Yes, I did.
And he's here to defend the responsible contractor policy.
No, he's not here to defend, he's here to give you your answers to your legal questions that you may have, not defend.
What kind of apprenticeship does paving contractors have to do paving work that could go out and pave parking lots, driveways, and roadways for several hundred thousand dollars to do a wonderful job? There's also that you hire a construction manager to make sure there's nails don't go through the roof, that's a job, but a construction manager to make sure projects go smoothly. There are many, many large projects in this county that were built without a responsible contractor ordinance, and there's certainly no need to have one in this school district.
Mrs. Oliver?
I just wanted to point out, we had, we had talked about this. We, again, Bucks County has adopted this, Warmster Township has adopted this, many other organizations have adopted this. The, the question I had regarding, this is only jobs over $300,000, only jobs, and if it happens that we go out to bid and we don't get what we're looking for as far as a bid that is acceptable, then we have the ability to override this. To me, there is nothing but a win-win situation here when we're saying that we want to be aware of the training of the folks coming to work on our buildings, it's, it becomes a safety issue, it's an engineering, it, all of it. It's, I, I don't see where we lose here.
So, the Justice Center in Bucks County is unsafe, and Anne's Choice, all those people living over there are living in unsafe buildings, come on.
I, I'm not saying that at all.
Not saying that they're unsafe, we're saying that Bucks County has adopted it, Warmster Township has adopted.
They adopted it last year after decades of not having it.
But they still adopted it.
Right.
Bucks County adopted it.
Why'd they adopt it? I ask you that, do you know why they adopted it?
I do not know, but I.
I don't, I know why they adopted it.
Go ahead.
Because it was an election and different people were elected to office, that's why Bucks County adopted a responsible contracting ordinance.
But when you listen to D. D'Amolimo, listen to his speech, it does talk about the, the quality of work, and why shouldn't our community have that quality of work? It's not, it's not excluding anybody, it's just saying that you need to be trained.
I would just say, like, seriously, manifestly, we have had in this district, not really just, you know, we obviously are something that, you know, Mr. Miller's referred to as in, I won't speak about it anymore, but you know the situation there, when the administrative building was done, a couple, you know, right before I got on the board, they had to come in and do a $7 million mold remediation right before we could occupy after they were basically all done, so it cost $7 million extra, I forget what the exact number was. But the point is, you know, again, study after study after study will tell you that the contractors that bring the most trained workers, you simply get better work, and we are, we have been in this district penny-wise and pound-foolish multiple times in recent memory with respect to building projects. So, I, I mean, I, I fail to understand why anybody wouldn't want, especially here.
Mr. Bonowski, yeah, just one, to address Mr. Miller's comment from earlier, Mr. Miller, you had asked about subcontractors and how we ensure that they are qualified, responsible, they have to follow the same requirements that the contractor does. If a subcontractor can't make those qualifications, then the contractor can replace them, or the district can, cannot, cannot choose the contractor who won the low bid, so that's the process for the subcontractors.
All right, for any past work, we certainly do not know whether or not the contractor may or may not have met the standard.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the first part of your comment.
I said, for any previous work, we certainly do not know whether or not the contractors met the standard since it was not tested.
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
Mrs. Brancato?
Normally, on a job that's $300,000, you have a project manager, you have a contracting company that you contract with, then they choose, they choose their own subcontractors. We don't choose their subcontractors, they do. So, you're saying if those subcontractors are not businesses within an official apprenticeship program, they can't use them?
Yes, they have to meet the same responsibility.
Okay, so, like Mr. Martin said, where is the apprenticeship program for paving? Do you know where it is?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Do you know if there is one?
I don't know about paving contractors specifically.
They teach you to be good painters too, they have painting apprenticeships to paint.
So, all these guys out here paving the streets, right? There's no apprenticeship program, that's, that's learn-on-the-job.
I don't know if that's true or not, I don't know if that's, there's certainly painting apprenticeships.
I'm not talking about painting.
So, that is, that is, we don't have the answer to that, but we're not approving this policy tonight, so we can absolutely get the answer to that before we need to approve this policy, it's, we're not approving it for another.
Why would we, why would we, look, I'm not saying don't get a union roofer, I'm not saying that, because, you know, that's probably in my kid's mouth.
Again, there's, the word "union" doesn't exist in this policy, we're not saying it's union, it's not there.
Okay, John, a, a, a business that has an official apprenticeship is 99% of the time a union shop.
So, the business is.
I'm not saying a union shop is bad, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, don't count the union guys out, their, their quality of work will speak for itself, but why, why would we count out Mr. Wharton B. and his three sons?
So, I think.
When Mr. Wharton B. does a great job.
I, I think there's a little miscommunication with, the business itself doesn't have to run an apprenticeship program, that's not what the policy says, it says that the workers have to have taken part in one, that can be done outside the business. I have raised questions about whether our middle.
John, when's the last time you paved the driveway?
We're not talking about me.
Never, there is no apprenticeship program for paving, it's a learn-on-the-job kind of thing.
But the paving company must participate in the apprenticeship program, it's not the individual workers that are there on site, it's the company, so Wharton B. Paving and Sons would have to participate in that program, would have to, during the length of the contract that they want to bid on, during the length of that project.
Where would you like them to go to that apprenticeship school if there is no paving apprenticeship school? There's, there's, there's official schools, like, if you're, if, if you're a roofer, you go to roofing apprenticeship school, classwork, bookwork. If you're, if you're an apprenticeship electrician, it's not just on the job, it's in a classroom, there's no paving in a classroom.
And that's exactly what we're looking for, we're looking for the people who have been trained, who continue to train, continuing education.
Wait, this might just be a simple matter of changing some language within the policy, if a paving apprenticeship program, if it doesn't exist, obviously, we can't, we can't do that.
How about we just say official training instead of apprenticeship? Why?
Well, we have to look at, what is official training, or, like, Mr. Wharton B. training his sons to do it a certain way.
So, here's what I'm going to say.
Are we going to continue education, or do we, or do we want to make sure that people know exactly what they're doing?
Isn't that why we have Mr. Wharton B.? Isn't that why he's the educated guy on that, on this, on this administration?
Mr., so, what we're trying to prevent, we're trying to prevent is to make sure that every single person that we have on there has been properly trained to work on our schools, that is what we're trying to do, and if we can't get a bid, then the board can, can override that, so I don't see where the, where we're losing at.
It's, it's your wording, and you're counting out, you're counting out good people that know how to do a job.
Mrs. Brancato, this has been decided beforehand this meeting, the fact that the solicitor's here on a policy that's just for initial discussion.
Do you know that?
Leads me to believe that this was all hashed out prior to this meeting, and he's here to defend the position that.
When you, when you go to a job site, some, some of the trades, well, you go to a job site, and they're, well, Carmen, my, my husband's working on a school right now, you go to the job site, there's union, there's union roofers there, there's union electricians, the, the, the project manager, I don't know, is he, is he a union guy or not? Does it matter? It should just be the top, the, the cream of the crop, and sometimes the cream, we have a fence guy, and I don't know his name, thank God for him, there's a fence guy in this community, he's, he's amazing, he's the best fence guy around, he's not union, he's not, but he could, he's been doing it for 40 years, 40 years says something. So, we're not counting that guy out because he didn't go to an official, learn how to put up a fence apprenticeship program, that's just, that would be, make us stupid.
Mr. Miller?
There aren't any union fences, there aren't any union fences.
Okay, we're not talking about that, Mr. Miller has the floor.
Yeah, I, I just want to ask a point of information, knowing how the Policy Department at P S B A works, whenever any one school district creates a policy with the assistance of P S B A, it becomes available to all school districts, so I would like to know specifically if P S B A recommended this policy or merely provided it among policies that we might consider.
So, as I shared before, unfortunately, Centennial uses a template format in their cover letters, okay, and it should not have read that way, the way it did, but you do have, and doing my due diligence, because I've never done one of these, so let's be clear, so I want to be clear that this is not something that has been pre-planned, because I've never been a part of an R C O process, okay, but we did do follow the process in your policy, since you have an administrative policy process, it went through that process, I do my due diligence in asking questions and trying to vet this process, which included asking for legal counsel, your chosen legal counsel, okay? And, no, I want to answer, because I'm answering multiple questions, because I, when it's my integrity or ethics, I take that very serious, and he will tell you, I had a very curt conversation about, long as we're following process, procedure, and ethical above board, I'm going to do my job, if that becomes an issue for me, I'm not risking my license, I'm a commissioned officer in this state. So, I take that very seriously, and no one here, and you heard that from an attorney, can ask me to do anything to break a state law, I can tell the board no if it goes against state code because of my sworn oath and as a commissioned officer. Now, bringing it to this process is a part of it, whether I agree with it or not, as I've talked to our team, we do our part administratively, and then we put it through the process for you all to give your input on it as a board, I don't get to unilaterally decide what Dana Ben, because I don't own this district, you know, my job is to try to make sure the district's interest is protected in the process, so I put my question in, forward, and now it's going through the process, which was also the administrative policy process, now it comes to the board for you all to discuss, to either decide, and that's why this phase is here. This is a, so, yes, there is another district that has a policy that we looked at, there's also districts locally that have resolutions, and my recommendation was that it goes through the policy process, not a resolution process. And my recommendation was that it goes through the policy process, not a resolution process. And that's why it's going through this process, because we believe that that was the most transparent process that would have multiple people looking at this to chime in, which included administrative policy and now the whole board in a public discussion, so that there is no perception of impropriety to go on. So there was a established policy that we looked at, and a local one, and also two districts that had resolutions locally. And my input was, this should not be a resolution, we should put it through the whole policy process to create transparency and discussion in it. Now, then it goes forward, and I'll make sure that's corrected, it needs to be clarity, because I just checked with the staff, how does it get, and they just use that language, because that's the template you all abuse to answer Mr. Martin's question. So this is part of the process for you all to discuss, either don't move it forward or tell us what to do to fix it. But I will assure you that myself, uh, Mr. Whartonby, uh, Mr. Greenwood have chimed in multiple times, concerns or thoughts that we have of this process. And then now that we've done our part, it goes to the whole board. Okay, this.
I hope you, you know how much I understand, support, and appreciate your role and authority. Uh, I'm simply aware that, for example, Bristol and Plymouth White Marsh both have this policy, and I've heard from board members at both districts that, uh, they felt the presence of the policy caused them, uh, a greater expense than was necessary on projects they worked on.
So, Mr. Miller?
My only question was not to go beyond whether or not PSBA included this policy because it exists at member school districts, or if PSBA specifically recommended that every school district should have this policy.
Okay. Um, so if I may, we're, we're reaching that point where we're saying the same things over again, asking the same questions multiple times. Um, I, I would suggest, we are not voting on this tonight. We can have this discussion again, we can talk about this more. I would suggest we move on to the policies we are adopting tonight, if that's okay.
I, I would like to ask that we do some research with districts that have, uh, adopted this policy and see their feelings.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Um, moving...
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that we could all, I'm, I'm reaching here, but I think that we could all come to an agreement if we change some of the verbiage in what makes a responsible contractor. I think that's how simple it is.
And I, I have, myself, actually already said that, that's something we can look at, changing a few of the words as needed to come to an agreement. Um, we have a month before we're doing this, we have time to discuss this, we have time to change wording.
I mean, in, in the real world, if, if a job is over 300,000, chances are, those people are highly trained, whether it's from an apprenticeship program or learning on the job as they go along. I mean, Robert Whartonby's not going to have, sorry, Robert, you're just easy right there. Robert, Robert Whartonby doesn't have 100, you know, 100 guys to pull off a $500,000 job. That's going to be a very skilled company that would have that. So I think we just need to change the verbiage.
Community member. It's a community member, I believe.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna...
It's, we, we have, it's...
There'll be additional community comments later in the, actually, very shortly, there'll be additional community comments.
Okay. So, moving on, policies for adoption tonight, uh, be it resolved that Centennial School Board, uh, first of all, anyone want to pull any of these policies for adoption tonight? Seeing none. So, 7.2, be it resolved that Centennial School District Board of School Directors adopt the following policies. 7.2A, uh, Policy 115, Career and Technical Education. 7.2B, Policy 705, Facilities and Workplace Safety. 7.2C, Policy 805.1, Relations with Law Enforcement Agencies. 7.2D, Policy 903, Public Participation in Board Meetings. 7.2E, Public Attendance at School Events. Policy 7.2F, uh, sorry, number 7.2F, Policy 907, Visitors. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on any of these?
Question on, only one, on 7D.
Yeah.
Of the public participation. Uh, it says the reason for the change is that this was to comply with current health and safety guidelines. When they change, do we have to go back and then change this policy? They're gonna change, obviously.
Oh, I know, I know, I don't, um...
Next month, and then September, they're gonna keep changing. So every time they change, do we have to go back and revisit this policy?
So, I think that, and Dr. Bedden, you can probably answer better, this policy is probably going to be changed again in the near future, um, but it, it just, we can, we also have the ability to suspend a policy as needed, so if it changes, we can suspend it and send it back to be rewritten. This is just to get us through the current time with...
Well, the other thing that was done is, it, we tried to write it in a manner that it would not be major overhauls required, uh, because of that, so that was taken into account.
Anything else? Voice vote, um, all those in favor? Aye. Any one opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Aye. Well, I, I was an aye, sorry, got off mute late.
Okay, that's 9-0-0.
Okay, financials, Mr. Birdnick?
Would anyone like anything polled? Seeing none. 8.1, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the schedule of bills, investments, cafeteria budget reports, and general fund cash receipt summary, April 2021, as per the attached. 8.2, approves the 2021 budget transfers for April, as per the attached. 8.3, approves the pending bills list, as per the attached. 8.4, approves the pre-approved paid bills list, as per the attached.
I'll second that.
Any board discussion? Seeing none, can we take a vo, a, uh, voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? 9-0.
Board discussions? Okay, um, reports, district policy report, Mr. Panofsky?
I mean, you kind of pretty much heard our policy report. Uh, we continue to go on, uh, our quest led by Ms. Islandberg and Colleen, uh, to standardize our policies, to put them in uniformity with PSBA, uh, policy numbers. It's, it is a large task, and that is why you're seeing a lot more policies coming up than we normally have, because we normally, you know, one at a time will redo them, we're taking these in big bunches. Um, huge thanks to the Citizens Policy Committee, because they're having to go through a lot more than they usually do also, um, and the Admin Policy Committee for everybody who works for the district, that is a part of that. Uh, it's a long process, but it's a long, but very, very needed process. Uh, our policies will now be standardized with the, um, most of the districts in the state, and it will make things a lot easier, uh, and we have more coming up at the next meeting to prove and to present. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Panofsky. Um, BCIU, Mrs. Islandberg?
I do have a comment here, you know, in this regard, because it, it, you know, it's good to have the Policy Committee here, but what I'm hearing is, you know, a, a policy committee that's operated by only board members from the warmines to township. We do not have any representation, you know, from...
Mr. Miller is on the Admin Policy Committee.
Oh, we do? I didn't, you didn't mention that. All right.
I'm sorry, Ms. Islandberg leads, is the, is the board lead, but it's, it's me, it's Ms. Islandberg, myself, and Mr. Miller who are on the Admin Policy Committee.
Ms. Islandberg, BCIU?
Let me add some, some clarity, too, though. The policies for administrative policy originates, uh, like it says, administratively also. And even in the policy, technically, administration is the chair of it, uh, which is why, um, a lot of it comes through the office of the superintendent with, uh, Colleen. Um, the policies are about, of course, uh, the district and the fact that the matter is that we're trying to put many of them in alignment with, uh, what PSBA has in store. One of the challenges that has happened, and this is a term that we use just for conversation's sake, is that the reason they got so far behind is a term that was shared with me to, to, for simplicity, that staff said is, they were overly centennialized, so that when PSBA updates a policy to comply with the law, hours didn't line up to make the changes. And so we just kept getting pushed back and pushed back because it looked so different, and the work became very daunting for them to try to even keep it up to date. Uh, the other thing that it does is, um, we have some that are missing. I mean, th, this week, we have a major one that we uncovered that is missing in the district that actually, um, you know, needs to be addressed quickly, because it impacts an expectation of how we communicate, how we operate, uh, based on a state review that they're doing right now. So I just want to highlight the importance of why there are, again, so many, and one of the main functions is the policy governs how we act as employees of the district. And without them being up to date, you have a lot of individualization of how people perform in the district. So it helps the district functions also.
Mrs. Islandberg?
I have no report for Bucks County IU this month.
Okay. Um, PSBA, Mr. Panofsky?
I mean, PSBA report's gonna be the same thing it's been pretty much every meeting. Uh, we continue to work with mitigating COVID-19. Um, actually, PSBA has been talking a lot about social and emotional learning. Um, I will admit, the first time I ever heard of it was at the NSBA Equity Conference that Mr. Miller and I attended last year. I got to sit in on a wonderful presentation on, uh, social and emotional learning, which really opened my eyes to it. Um, again, I'm going to do my push about charter school funding. Please reach out to the representatives, uh, so we can get some meaningful charter school refund, uh, funding reform in this state. I'm hoping it's going to pass, and I think everything else, Mr. Miller, will touch on in the Legislative Liaison Report.
Legislative Council Liaison, Mr. Miller?
Well, thank you for the handoff, Mr. Panofsky. Uh, there are things going on in, in funding, and, uh, for the first time, I'm impressed to see that there is bipartisan support, uh, for a meaningful charter reform. Uh, there was a significant event held at Ben Salem High School, uh, which I was not able to attend due to short notice, but I have heard from many people that our own superintendent was a case speaker at that event and made some very, uh, dramatic points that were true, and, and this is something we need. Uh, in the Senate Education Committee yesterday, there were four bills that, uh, PSBA supports. Uh, one of them, uh, provides mandate relief, one of them provides, uh, potential, uh, protection from liability and risk. Uh, there are a few bills now moving with regard to, uh, charter reform itself. Uh, we've done a lot of work and recommended House Bill 272, which has a companion Senate Bill Number 27. Uh, and not, not only do they have wide bipartisan support, uh, there are new bills emerging, and one of them very significantly, uh, would restore the, uh, funds that came from the state to reimburse districts for their charter school expense. Uh, that is not officially a bill yet, there's a, uh, memorandum asking for cosponsors that is circulating. I'll keep you posted on that. Uh, where I'm going with this is, for the first time, uh, PSBA is sponsoring a charter reform virtual rally on, uh, May the 25th at 9:30 a.m., and I will circulate an invitation to the board for anyone who would like to register, uh, and that, of course, goes through the entire board of 10. Uh, I've never done anything like this before, but I'm going to try it. So, let, let's see what we can do. I, I believe that we'll get some attention from, uh, the, the General Assembly, and, and maybe we can really make something happen this year, because we certainly need it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, um, MBIT, Executive Council Liaison, Mr. Goddickson?
Thank you so much. We had our meeting last night, uh, and the good news out of MBIT is, they have an overcapacity enrollment in a number of programs, uh, even to the point where they are considering adding a third session, meaning that they will have school from 2:45 to 5:15. It has not yet been put in place. Uh, the two programs involved in that potential is the electrical and welding program, um, but, you know, there are 10 other programs that are also over-enrolled at this time, which of course means that teachers should be returning on a full-time basis next year. Um, the only area that has some minor issue is the HVAC program, uh, that might be reduced to where they would attend the plumbing program for the first two years, and then enter into some sort of on-the-job training program with a, a plumbing or HVAC company, uh, out in the field. Uh, the Perkins Performance Indicators, you know, have also come across very strong at MBIT, with only one area being a little bit of a issue, and that is the non-traditional, um, area, which means that, you know, males working in primarily female, um, career clusters or the other way around, males, you know, working in, or females working in male clusters. Uh, besides that, we have negotiations, you know, taking place for the teachers, as well as the Act 93 program at MBIT. And the biggest piece there is that we, here at Centennial, will have the recognition on June 7th for the MBIT graduating, uh, students. Uh, on top of that, we have some capital improvement programs that will take place during the summer. They will be replacing two sections of roofing, so, I mean, why, we have talked a lot about roofing tonight, but they will, you know, do two sections of the roofing, uh, area. And lastly, there was a revision of Policy 006, you know, uh, public participation at MBIT. Um, and, and to conclude, as Mr. Panofsky said earlier tonight, uh, there were 12 gold winners, you know, State, um, Skills USA program, out of 20 gold winners in the state, two of those came from Centennial School District. That's it.
We're, we're joking about next year, we're going to try to go for all 20, and we'll just be like, ha-ha.
Thank you, Mr. Goddickson. Um, any educations? All right, any community comments? Yes, will you come up to the mic and say your name and address?
Hi, my name is, uh, Michael Monteleone. I just recently moved in to 1019 Red Barn Road, uh, with my wife Chelsea. Um, Chelsea went to Centennial School District, uh, for Miss 12 Years, and her brothers and sisters went there as well. I just want to condemn the, um, the board for bringing up, taking the steps to work responsibly inside the schools. I take that very seriously, because I myself went through a four-year apprenticeship program. And without that apprenticeship, apprenticeship program, I wouldn't have been able to buy the house here, at 1019 Red Barn Road. And to Mr. Martin's, uh, question there about a paving, uh, apprenticeship, there actually is, the operating engineers, so...
Is that the one it is?
Yes, they are, yes. I work alongside those guys every day. So, I know for myself, my second day in my apprenticeship, we went and did OSHA 30. So, that was 30 hours of safety training right there, and I already had OSHA 10, so I had 40 hours of safety training already under my belt. And I know the guys that I work with on jobs day-to-day, that they are all working safely just as myself is. And I know my company has a safety director, my local has a safety director, so I have two points of contact right there, and they come out to the job frequently to make sure everybody's working safely, the job's done safely. And I know, just from the company I've been with for the past four years, if there is a problem, just like with that roof in there, we come back, because we stand by what we do.
That was a non-union roofing company that did that?
Uh, yes, I, I, I'm not aware, but I just know...
Yeah, yeah, it's a non-roofing, non-union company. But, um, um, I totally agree with you. You, you, I know you have to go through-
Yeah, well-
-safety training and re-safety training. I'm, I'm not saying don't use-
But, but that's like my four-year college, how every teach-
You're right.
How every teacher went to four years to teach a, teach a student. I just didn't learn from my dad at home. I learned from the teachers in the classroom-
Right.
And the teachers I had in the field with me.
Right.
So I have-
Thank you so much. I do appreciate you, I do appreciate your comment, but I have to, um, keep it up three minutes.
Okay, no problem. Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Schedule of board meetings, calendar events, uh, Charlie Martin?
Thank you very much. Uh, starting next Tuesday, all schools are closed, and service day is Election Day, so hopefully people will take the opportunity to vote on Tuesday. Also, that day is a Bucks County Intermediate Board Meeting. Uh, on the 25th, it's the next committee, the whole meeting at 7:00 p.m. in this room of the, uh, School Board. And May 31st, uh, Memorial Day, all schools' offices are closed for Memorial Day holiday. Going to June, June 2nd, uh, at 6:30 is Senior Awards Night, going to be done virtually. Uh, June 8th at 5:30, the Centennial School Board Meeting will be at a different time, it'll be an hour and a half earlier than usual at 5:30, uh, here, and then later that evening at 7 o'clock, there's a Night of Reflections at the High School Stadium. June 10th is graduation. Uh, rain date is June 11th. We had discussion earlier about how that's going to work, it's going to be at the stadium. Uh, Friday, June 11th is the last day for students in K-11 with early dismissal. Monday, the 14th at 5:30, MBIT Executive Council Meeting. Tuesday, the 15th at 7, a Bucks County Intermediate Board Meeting. And Tuesday, June 22nd at 7:00 p.m. is the next committee, the whole meeting in this boardroom of School Board.
May I ask a quick question? I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this, but are we doing anything, uh, this year for what is usually the Retirement Recognition Award?
I can't speak to what you've done in the past, but I can tell you I've been working with Beth Catus on identifying all the people who are retiring, and we are putting a program together, whether we have to do it virtually. I know we've also set up appointments for me and Dr. Bedden to visit them as well.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right.
No, but I'll move to adjourn.
Um, what?
I move to adjourn.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Can I get a second?
Second.